Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the budget workshop, March first, two thousand sixteen.
The move?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I was very impressed, Mary, you caught all the conversations and noted them.
All right.
Three, that was the minimum. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the budget workshop, March seventh, two thousand sixteen.
The move?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Keep the tax rate at three eighty-eight. Think that's important, discuss the budget. Another three or four different events here of discussion.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now's the time for presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community. Since we have no one here tonight, Mr. Tatro, your turn.
Um, we're coming out of winter, not much to report as far as anything new. Just following up on ongoing issues with property management, property issues. About it in a nutshell.
We don't have any code just for paint peeling, massive quantities of paint peeling.
Well, there is in the building code, but the problem with that, I mean, you, I could enforce it, yes. But then I would have to enforce it for everybody and what does that gonna entail? I mean.
How are you gonna decide the decree?
Right, that's, that's the problem. I mean, they talk about this when we go to school, but it's a very hard thing to enforce, you know, uniformly.
I mean, if it's completely falling off the building.
Yeah, because we, there are a few as you're walking around, of course, this time of year it looks exceptionally disgusting in places, but you know, um, the old building along the back corner, um, Butternut and Maple, the building, they moved to.
NADA?
NADA. I mean, it's just, I feel bad for the neighbors that are keeping up their properties and then you have this, it's completely strict. And it's just awful. You know, that's just a business, as an example, there's plenty of other homes that are equally.
I agree, but again, you know, you could get into some protracted litigation over things like that.
I was just curious.
Well, we've visited that building in the past.
The nada building? Well, for junk.
Yeah, for junk coming outside. Neighbors complaining about the.
Yeah, but ever since you put the fence up, I haven't had any more complaints.
Yeah.
I agree it's a problem, but I also agree with Mickey. It's tough.
And I would think that you would have to then go after everybody who's got any kind of disrepair.
I agree, right.
You know, it'd be like, well, his porch is falling down, but his house is painted.
You know. You know, elderly couple, I just.
Can't afford it.
I know, I know. I thought so, I just asked.
No, there are, you know, if you lived in downtown Saratoga, I'm sure everything would have to be painted, but unfortunately, we're in a depressed area.
Yeah, we are.
We're pushing in that direction. Saratoga's not so far away. Any further discussion with Mike?
No, uh, no more development with Pattersons?
No, I haven't heard from him, he hasn't responded to anything that we sent him. He has a court date for the seventeenth, I believe, for some of the things on his building. Um, we've talked about, I'm sure it's coming up, about the defense, so we're gonna be putting up around there.
Yes, I'm gonna do this.
So, uh.
Is that sorry?
I'm sure he's gotten the letters, talked to the attorney, he hasn't heard anything from him either. He emailed him also, as he had requested, so I think it's just gonna be a game of cat and mouse with him, but let the court do its thing, go that route.
With the court, it takes a little bit of pressure off us. Moves it under the court.
Yeah, I was talking with the mayor earlier today, um, having some issues with some, some the same people in the past, in the past years that I've spoken to, warned about garbage and junk. And I'm not sending him any more letters to clean up. I'm just gonna do court appearances and let the court handle it. I mean, how many times you have to tell somebody? It's the same discussion every time, nothing changes. So, maybe if they start spending a little money in court, they'll, I mean, you know.
I agree.
Clean up, pick up your junk.
Yeah.
I agree.
There's no more snow, you can't hide it.
Nope. So, in that, we're gonna move forward with lawn care too, as we're going to be hitting that earlier than normal?
Well, the problem with that is you gotta wait till it's six inches, then you gotta send the letters and that's another little thing that's hard to win.
Can we manage the ones for six inches now from last year?
Right. Starting at six inches.
Well, with last year's, we don't have to send the letters so much anymore, but if it grows, we just issue them a citation.
Right.
Right.
Because we've dealt with them in the past, the same.
It's the same ones year after year, same properties.
Yeah, and the same ones won't respond.
Yeah.
So, we mow it, we bill them, add it to their taxes. That's all we can do.
Where do you do that most? With it?
Yeah, downtown.
Anything on taxes?
I don't know.
We mow them.
The only one we did was.
Three or four times.
Con.
Cons.
And that will be on these coming, coming taxes.
Right.
Mike, you spoke to Mr. Wheeler, or Wyler, I would say that?
Yes, yes.
Does he, does he have plans?
Yeah, he indicated to me that, uh, he's had some health issues in the past few months, but he's over that, apparently he has a, a younger helper now, and he says you're gonna see a big improvement around there. Because again, I explained to him that, uh, well, I haven't been in court a year or so, go over grass, and he brought that up, and I said, well, I said, you gotta keep your property up, you gotta pick up your junk. And he, he agreed to it, so he's well aware of it, so we'll see.
So, the upstairs door is still open and the windows are still.
Yeah, I talked to him about that and.
Birds are flying in and out and.
Well, we had boarded him up.
Not the upstairs door?
Not that upstairs door.
Oh, the upstairs, no.
Just the front door. It's wide open.
Oh, no, I didn't realize that. No, I spoke to him and he's supposed to be taking care of things around there, so.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else from there? Thanks, Mike. Good evening, as a reminder, the water, or the April water wastewater billing will be mailed at the end of this month. This is the first billing with the new water rates. And depending upon your usage, you will notice an increase in your water and wastewater bill. As stated in my February report, this increase is necessary to begin repaying the cost of the loan for the shared water project. This loan is a thirty-year, zero percent loan with its first payment due on January eighth, two thousand seventeen. The increase for water will be used to meet the villagers' portion of this loan, along with the town of Champlain. Construction will begin as soon as the weather permits, and there will be a huge increase in activity here in the village with the equipment and workers arriving and staying throughout the construction season. You may have noticed that the water tank on Prospect Street, the workers are already here and beginning to construct that. The new water towers will be completed soon, and new pipes will follow. We will soon have plans for our review of the new water softening filtration plant to be built. And that should be online late in two thousand sixteen. Also included in this project, new water meters will be installed in each residence, which will make, which will make reading easier and less time consuming. This promises to be a very busy summer and fall here in the village, and your patience and understanding will be greatly appreciated throughout the process. If you should have any questions about this project, please call the village office at two nine eight, four one five two, and we will be very happy to help provide your answers to your questions. Another reminder, the April water wastewater bills must be paid on or before May third, two thousand sixteen, to avoid having the outstanding bills turned over to the county to be applied to your property taxes. Finally, this evening, we will schedule a public hearing for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen village budget for seven P M, April fourth, during our regularly scheduled board meeting. All are welcome to attend, and we hope that you do. Thank you. Trusty Garrett.
Uh, so Janet and I met on the library, and you're all copied with the summary of that meeting. We met with Allison at the library to get some information on the programs that they currently are providing, what she has found that works, um, information on what their circulation is, how many patrons are coming in the door versus last year. Um, and everything is trending down, except for the circulation of adult books, that is up. But everything that was reported to us is very similar of what people are seeing across the nation in the public libraries, as well as across the world. So I did a lot of research after that meeting on, um, you know, ways of making, uh, public libraries relevant in, in communities, and then really becoming more community centers, um, and, and social areas. And some of the things we discussed was, you know, where our library is at the moment and possibilities of things to come different. So, there's some good information here to look at, uh, for us to have more information on, you know, where do we go from there? We do that under old business. But it's all detailed out, and Mary can give you a copy of that, um, to, to add to it. So, it, it was interesting to see. I think there's great potential. I think there's fabulous potential, and, um, so we can discuss that under there, but there's, there's things that can be done, and I think that, you know, keeping this library in our community is very important to do. So, whether it's a discussion of this is something we wanna take on, um, or support them in other ways, whether, you know, it be, you know, by our oversight or not, but I think it's definitely something to assist. Okay, so we can discuss that under, under the business. Um, I have looked for other, um, gardening grants, I'm not finding any that I, that I love. Um, as I had said last year, I really wanted to, uh, find a, a grant that kind of pulls everything together with now having, you know, the community center downtown, it not only, you know, from start to finish with the assistance in the planning of, of the gardens, and then, you know, reaping of your harvest, and then what do you do with your harvest? And kind of, there's a huge trend in the direction of folks going back to the old-fashioned way of canning and um, really making it all organic. But the number of grants are a lot less than I have seen in the past. I'm still looking and hoping that we'll come across something, 'cause I would really love not only just having, um, for the older folks in our community, but getting some of the kids involved, because kids really love that stuff. Um, I know my granddaughter loves doing A to Z with me, I mean, she's really into that. And so, when you've got kids that are interested, it really sparks it to continue on in, in the future. So, I, if we don't find a grant, I still think that we should find a way by going in the community. I know there are members that, you know, have been canning their whole life and would love to share that whole process. Um, and, and the whole process of doing the organic gardening, um, piece that is so important right now, that people are very into that. And by having the garden downtown, you know, what can we do to enhance that? You know, we kinda had a fall off last year, but what can we do to help people so that they know what they're doing and, and how to have the best crops that they can have with it? So, I'm still looking, hopefully we'll have something more significant for the next meeting. But I really want something there, I think that we would have a, a following for that.
See it go back like it was the first year.
Exactly.
You know, where every plot was taken and well maintained and, and let's get that first year, it's very good.
So I think there's a lot of potential there as well.
Okay. Okay, Trusty Trombley?
Don't have much to report, but remind everybody that it's election day tomorrow, so please exercise your right and get out to vote, even though there's not a lot of opposition. It'd be nice to have numbers.
When you said opposition, you looked at her.
I didn't mean it that way. Anyways, yeah, please, uh, please get out and vote, and thank you in advance for your support.
Very good. Thank you. Trusty McFetrich?
A few upcoming events, um, on March twentieth, Sunday, March twentieth, from one to three, at the Meeting House. We're going to have a gathering of the senior citizens that grew up in the village of Champlain. They're going to share some of their memories of interesting characters that they grew up with. I think we sent your mother a letter, well, maybe it was. It's the twentieth, Sunday, the twentieth, one to three. Um, on March twenty-sixth, uh, at one, at the Meeting House, we're going to have another Champlain Kids Connected, and this is going to be an afternoon at the drive-in. And so the children are going to have boxes that they're gonna turn into their cars, and then they're going to watch a movie in their cars.
Doesn't it? It sounds great.
That should be a lot of fun. Um, March thirty-first, which is a Thursday, at six thirty P M, Gordy Little is coming up to talk about his career and, um, his books. It's on the thirty-first.
At.
At six thirty.
In which place?
Meeting House. Um, the children's story hour is always the, um, first Friday of every month, so April first, it is at six thirty, and I have no other details on that right now. But that's Friday, April first, at the Meeting House. And then the only other thing is, we did have a meeting with the, um, the project advisory committee for the waterfront revitalization study. It's very interesting, very enthusiastic group of people, had tons of ideas of things they'd like to see in the village, both, uh, economic improvements and recreational opportunities. So, we are meeting again on March thirtieth with the consultants. I can give you more information then. This was just a preliminary, let's get to know each other, let's get some more ideas down on paper, but it was, uh, it was a lot of fun. People were very enthusiastic. So, that's it. Oh. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's the big thing. We get the boats again.
Yay.
Nice.
Yeah, thank you.
I was gonna ask you.
Yes, yes.
When you talked about that.
Yes, we were included in the grant from the Lake Champlain Maritime Museum, and Champlain, New York was chosen again to host two boats. So, spread the word, they're coming end of May, and they'll be here for the summer. And we really, really need to form a team of teenagers. So get the word out. That's, that's really part of the grant, and that's one of our goals.
So they can race in the lake?
Yeah, we would take them over to Burlington and over by Virgens, and let them participate in a little competition, friendly competition. Yep. Thank you for your input. Yeah, that is it.
Okay, thank you. Trusty Trombley?
Um, I do wanna reiterate what, um, the other trustee Trombley said, and polls are open tomorrow from twelve until nine. It is a privilege that we have in this country to be able to vote, so please do get out and exercise that privilege. Uh, the only thing I wanted to say was, I feel bad for the crew, they finally were able to flood the, uh, skating rink, and we had sixty degrees on Saturday, and now it's all lumpy and bumpy again, and.
But it was heavily used when it got up and running. I know.
The week that it was cold. Um, and before you know it, we'll be doing spring cleanup and all of that jazz, so the kudos to you guys, you always do such a wonderful job with everything that you're, that you're given.
Okay, thank you. Report from the clerk treasury, please.
Um, everyone has the, um, expense and revenue report for February.
There's no discussion? The motion to pay the warrant?
We do have additional invoices. The additional invoices are two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine ninety-six for, for a total warrant of twenty-one thousand four twenty-four oh three.
These are late bills?
Um, a lot of them we just got today. We do our, we had a warrant done on Wednesday.
Any discussion on the warrant?
Can I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additionals for a total of twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents?
Second. Well, Andy, I just have that one question, and for the River Street, for the planning development, is the reimbursement correct? We out. I knew in the back of my head, but why don't you bring it forward again?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We don't think the lifetime will be too long, but we're not really sure.
Well, no, our son said that he does not wait for reimbursement until he pays us.
Oh, okay.
As soon as Melissa approves the bill. Because we have to pay it, and she approves it, then she sends it to Rosas for an immediate reimbursement.
Okay, no further discussion, over, call please.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor, Mary?
Aye. Mike, you got a purchase requisition here, trusty Garrett said.
Requisition for having our international pump truck repaired. Needs rear brakes. Uh, we get too cold, and we were copying with it. And, uh, I'm asking this, uh, I'm asking for approval to spend one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, up to one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, uh, for the repair of the pump truck.
Make motion to approve the expenditure of sixteen fifty-eight.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Obviously, the truck needs a lot of.
Yeah.
Attention. Well, it's been a workhorse. Yeah. Well, that, when you were ditching and stuff like that, it comes in handy.
Yeah, yeah, you could use it and sell it a lot.
Certainly couldn't step up and buy a new one or do what that one does as well. Okay, if there's no further discussion, a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor, Mary?
Aye. Okay, to the correspondence, please.
Um, do you want to, skip Mike?
Oh, sorry, Mike. I was just looking, usually I have your report a year.
You should have, I gave it to you early.
That threw a lot.
That was wrong, Mike.
I was so shocked, I didn't know what to do. Do you have your print?
No, it must be in my mailbox.
We can, we can share it.
I had delivered that one, do you remember?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We, we stayed busy, uh, but we weren't able to get a little bit of inside stuff done, you know, service vehicles. Uh, trash pump, we had issues with our trash pump, the last, uh, break we had, we had to dig. Uh, we took it apart and found that the diaphragm was broke inside, so luckily we did have one. Um, but I will be ordering another one to have for a, for a backup.
What's a trash pump?
Uh, we use to, uh, water pump, three-inch, you can pump solids with it, two sand.
Oh, okay.
Like a mud pump. Mud sucker, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Never heard called that.
Also, uh, we have been going through some of our old maps and water books and, um, that's in the archives. Uh, which has been interesting, you find some pretty interesting stuff. Um, which we've been actually using, utilizing a lot of that information, that was sort of way that, um, hopefully we'll, next year, we'll have digital here where we can, uh, make it a little more readily available and use it, a little more user-friendly, if you will. Uh, we had a salt delivery, we, we did have to mix a little bit of sand and salt to get it through the rest of this season. Um, as it dries, we, they still have quite a bit of straight salt there, I'm gonna mix, uh, up what I have. And then we'll get one more, we're, um, we're allotted one more load uh, of salt on this year's budget that we'll, I think we have to get it by the end of April. We've gotta get it, because we're, we're gonna pay for it anyways, that's what we usually, we use a lot less this year than normal, this is not a doesn't even feel like winter's been here yet, but, so we should be in pretty good shape for, uh, salt budget for next year. Should give you enough that we shed filled. We got a couple lift station with issues, uh, single pump lift station down in Main Street. Um, was running, not pumping, we had to change pump out there, which we had one, uh, so we got that up and running. Uh, also, our Main Street lift station, uh, had tripped out, we had a failure. Um, we pulled the pumps and somebody flushed the towel, and towel got stuck inside the pump, and it ended up, it burned the overflow relay, which we had a spare one here, so we were able to put in, and, um, that went back up and, up and going.
Flushed a towel down the toilet?
Yeah. Yeah, there was a towel, it was a.
Must have a child.
Piece of a towel that was caught inside the impeller, so, um, unfortunately, we, it got caught in there and it couldn't. I'm surprised it didn't happen.
Couldn't possibly.
I am, too.
The only other option is to lift the manhole cover and throw it down in there, but I can't.
Um, I did do some, um, also, we had a, we were out, of course, it was, had to be the day that we had the ice. Uh, we broke the chain on the big chain, the drive chain on the sander. Uh, we were able to get it repaired within a couple hours, we had it back out, get some salt and the, some sand and salt in the roads. Uh, that was, this year we didn't have the snow, but before we seemed to have a lot of days with ice, and it just lingered at that temperature where we just had to keep putting sand on. Um, we did a little bit of ditching on Prospect, cleaned the ice, culverts. We did have that warm up, uh, some heavy rains, and we did have a little bit of flooding on Oak Street, Prospect, a few places. One night we were out till, till quite late, uh, opening culverts and whatnot, they were froze. Uh, but everything, everything seems to be going and, uh, and going fine. I do have a, I still have a few street lay requests in, uh, some of them have been fixed already, um, and actually I got them to call tomorrow, there was somebody to call, there was a layout, but I'll have to check on probably tonight on my way home. Right now, we're in the process of reading our water meters. We're, actually, today I think we finished up reading the meters, we just have to go through a few that have high ratings. Um, and then give them to the girls so they can go through them and. And then give them to the girls so they can go through them and tell me which ones that I missed. Then we'll go back out with any of the high issues and fix them. Probably this week, we'll be taking down our skating rink. That's pretty much drained. I don't want anybody to get down there and end up cutting our plastic up. So as soon as we can, we're gonna try to get that down and picked up. We've been staying very busy with this water project and a lot of time being spent on data collection. You'll see the DPW guys out on foot, going house to house. In some cases, digging holes in your front lawns, looking for our water shut offs. We're in the process of locating and entering points in our geographic information system, which is a GIS. For those of you who don't know what a GIS is, it's a data collector where I can capture, store, verify, and display points related to the position of the earth through satellites. What this does for me is I can save a point, put it on a map, and then find it again when we need it. This is a digital version and much more accurate compared to the old paper and hand-drawn maps that I have to look at, which some are updated. Trees, telephone poles, porches, driveway sidewalks were used for benchmarks and measured off from. When the tree gets cut down, the telephone pole breaks and replaced. Renovations are made to the homes, driveways changed and sidewalks replaced. The measurements are no longer any good if they don't get updated. With this GIS, these points will never change. So when emergency arises, we can locate that point quickly. Some of the points we're collecting are hydrant valves, main shut-off valves, sewer manholes, meter pits, curb stops, and storm drains. I have compiled a list of material to change out the five-hundred-plus existing water services in the village and town that will need meters and radio read equipment. Also adding pressure reducers and check valves where needed. This list was submitted to the EFC. There's awaiting approval so we can have the material ordered and start our meter install process. The new meters will cut down on labor costs of walking door to door to keep readings, to get readings. And new residential meters have data logging capability and alerts, which we can set certain parameters and use for many reasons. The increase in pressure will be installing pressure-reducing valves so that piping will not get over-pressurized and leak. Some homes have piping that is in bad shape with leaks. I will remake recommendations to homeowners about getting this pipe repaired or replaced if I see possible issues. All floor drains and some pump line plumbing will be inspected. And if illegal connections to sewer instead of storm drains are found, homeowners will have to correct issues and become compliant with the village local law. This information will be documented and followed up upon in a timely manner. I will be making calls and visiting every building with water service connections so we can set a timeframe to get access to your water meter. I'll be asking homeowners to please clean the area around your water meter and where your wire goes through for your remote reader outside so we can do the install of new equipment as needed. It is difficult for me to give an exact time needed to do these installations. And typically, in most cases, one to two hours, we should be able to install everything. But in some instances, it's gonna be longer. We may have to reconfigure piping or whatnot. Some will be in spaces where it won't be anything great to get into, but...
That's an understatement.
The commercial accounts and any other potentially high-hazard areas having connections to the village water will be required to have an approved lead-free testable backflow device. This was put in law back in May of 2010. Most buildings that need these devices already have them installed and are annually tested. I will be inspecting for any crossconnections for potential backflow to enter and contaminate our water mains. If you do not currently have and need an approved backflow prevention device, you will be asked to have one installed at the expense of the owner. This device has to be tested every year by a New York State certified device tester at the owner's expense. And a copy of the test sheet needs to be sent here to the village so we can put it on file for our annual, Quik County Health Department inspection. Also, hydrant flushing. Hydrant flushing, I'll remind everybody next month, but it's probably, I believe we're gonna start on the week of April eleventh through the fifteenth. And I believe our meeting's on the eleventh, correct?
Fourth.
Oh, okay. So I'll remind everybody again next month about hydrant flushing. But it will be, as of right now, it looks like it's gonna be April eleventh through the fifteenth. Weather permitting, you may see drops in pressure or a little discoloration in your water. This is normal. Also, I will remind you next month, brush pickup. Brush pickup will be probably April twenty-third and twenty-fourth and April thirtieth and May first. This is about a week or two earlier than last year. With the weather being nicer, I figure we can get started quicker. If you have yard debris, put it out curbside to be picked up. Limit one pickup load per resident... Per residents, not resident, I should say. Brush must be cut to a manageable size where one person can handle it. If you bag, anything that is bagged, please don't fill the bags so full that we can't lift them. People like to bag sand and whatnot. If one person can't lift it or the bags are in, they're so thin that they fall apart, that stuff is gonna stay there for the homeowner to take care of. If the village residents prefer, they can start anytime. Bring it down to the Elm Street debris yard. Loose debris only, no bags, please. Also, anything left on Elm Street debris yard, do not leave garbage or trash. If this yard gets abused, then we'll have to close it. And then nobody will, nobody will be able to bring their stuff there. If you have any questions about this, please call the village office. Two-nine-eight, four-one-five-two.
No building debris?
No, no construction debris. We had that again last year with people with... The biggest issue is they put boards in there with nails and we end up with flat tires. No construction debris, please.
And is that open to residents in the village? Or like I saw, a big contractor dumping a load there Sunday?
Village residents, for village residents only. Now, we... Have to be careful how I say this, but it's for visitors, village residents only. For instance, there was somebody that came over and helped over at the school clean up some brush there. And they had asked me, and I told them they could go ahead and put it there. We do not let commercial, commercial, um, commercial people come in. Usually for village residents only. Now, I know when I say commercial, we have some people that go around and help people write their lawns. I don't really consider that, you know, it's not an outside holler, if you will. Because there are people that go around, they shovel in the spring, they clean up lawns. So that I don't, you know, that is okay. Long as it's from the village here, not hauled in from... I had some last year hauling in from Rogers Point. No. If you're looking for a place, there is other places around, but not on our Elm Street dump yard.
I can only describe, didn't have any name on it, but it was a full-fledged, I mean, from here outside this wall, long, big.
Do you want to know where it came from or no?
Big, black. You know, obviously, it wasn't anybody local, you know? Like trick ball the size of a whole bag and that someone would have...
There will be cameras going up there, so we'll catch, you know.
That was my next question. Are we gonna have cameras there, too?
Uh, we will.
Okay.
This way here, we need to make an example of one. And I think they'll take care of, they'll take care of it.
I agree.
I did have a couple other purchase requests, but we'll save them for next month with the other pile that I got. Because I'm waiting for a couple quotes that didn't show up.
It's something that neither way.
Well, no, one of them's gonna be for loader tires, for the loader, which is an expensive one. And the other one is, we're having issues intermittently with the overhead door of the sewer plant. So I have two quotes. I do have numbers for both of them, but one of them, I asked them just put installation of. I asked for a breakdown so I could make sure we hit apples to apples. And I haven't received it yet. So it's verbally, it's supposed to be, but at least if I have a paper. So we'll hit those two next month. And then that's all I have.
Questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Now we can do the correspondence.
Notice violation to John Wayne Patterson. Foil request from Martin Harding and Lozati regarding construction at Key Bank by remaining constructions. Foil request from Martin Harding and Lozati regarding building permit for Key Bank. Correspondence to Village of Rogers Point regarding general law training for CDL drivers in the JCEO monthly course for February.
And you will be sending Rogers Point this training?
Yes. Yeah, there's a couple trainings that we're in charge that we're gonna hit. All the ones we can. One of them, it's recommended. One of them is the, what do they call it?
I got the CDL training, and there was one for the water license.
That one, yes, both of them. That one's the one we paid with Bonnie Black. But she said that because the rules change, we should take every couple of years. That CDL one, so they're gonna have it two hours. Ready to go in Rogers Point. Long as no emergencies come up, I can attend.
I'm sure all of them could use it.
It's a Friday. It's a Friday.
Oh, maybe.
It's this Friday? This Friday.
Oh, good. Yeah, the one Friday. I got a couple written on my calendar, two or three.
March thirtieth?
No, EAS CDL one Rogers Point is this Friday.
This one says March thirtieth.
I thought it was the thirtieth, too. That's why I wrote it down.
This is the CDL.
This is March thirtieth.
EAS, Village Assistance.
Thirtieth? I thought it was the eighteenth. What's the one down the eighteenth?
Thirteenth is what I...
Don't let me know by the eighteenth if you have employees that will attend.
The thirtieth is one of the training, that's what I have written down. Which are things that...
What is general law training about?
That's your drug and alcohol, we go for drug and alcohol. So they recommend every eighteen to twenty-four months that you redo it. As long as you do it once, by law, you're okay, but then rules change. So they recommend every couple of years that you, it's a two-hour. Because it's Bonnie Black that's putting it on from same person we went to, the EAS. It doesn't cost because you're paying for the EAS service, so you're...
Right.
So that's included with it.
She's good.
She has come here before.
Yeah, and the training Rogers Point, so...
She was here a couple of years ago, wasn't she?
And they've got some other training, too. They asked me if I understood. Lockout, tie-out. And I said yes. And I think combined with that, it was a compliant space one, which is a refresher. So they're career charged, they have so many.
Wasn't there one from, is that the one from Prescott?
No.
Compliant space and...
Well, we did that one before, OSHA, compliant space. This year, we were supposed to do it and we haven't done yet. There was an issue with the trainer, but CPR and AED, we're gonna try to do it.
So benefits. Just be certified, certified ground up to figure it out. Don't make fun. Your stomach growls over there. Okay, anything else on the correspondence? All business, you wanted to make some comments on the library?
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, at some point, we should probably pull everything together and have an in-depth conversation if this is something that we are looking to explore and move forward with. I know that there are some board members, I think most, that really want us to take this over. They have taken on a new board member, which is good. Dan Mink has stepped up to be on the board as well. But, you know, if this is something that is of interest to y'all, then we should, you know, really get an in-depth discussion going here as to whether we want to move forward with this or not. As it will take some planning, there's a, you know, a very extensive process through the Board of Education component of this to make this happen. So it's not something that obviously is going to happen for this budget year, but we can get the ducks in the row if this is something we want to pursue and getting it in place in time for our next budget year.
That would be the way to do it, I mean.
So do we want to wait till after the April meeting? Because that's the long meeting, maybe have it for May as the in-depth discussion? Okay, so I will invite our board members to be here, and Allison as well, so that, you know, a conversation, we can ask questions back and forth and really entertain whether this is something we want to move forward with and begin the process of moving forward or not moving forward.
With someone from the general public who might be watching this in the near future, if they wanted to serve on this library board, how would they do that?
Just get ahold of Allison at the library. You can get ahold of John Rowe or Dr. Southwick or Barry Freeman.
John, I think, is still in Florida.
You know, they all serve on the board. And they'll happy to take anybody on board. Some nice, fresh, young blood would be good.
More participation, the better.
Right. And with different ideas, you know? Obviously, things are changing and, you know, social media is the future. With all the tweets. Tweets. And whatnot that's out there. But it really is, you know, there's so many neat things that can happen at the library that people just don't know what they don't know. And there's exciting, fun things that can be, and there's exciting, fun things that need to be that aren't there at the moment. But can happen. So I think there's great potential, I mean, we're bored of, you know, making Champlain relevant. And this is a piece to help make our community relevant and to keep it there. You know, a piece of history that a lot of people have worked hard at. And now it's just making some changes. Changes, I think, that are fairly minimal. And, you know, we get the community behind it. We have a community day there. And let's, this is what we can do.
Does your email provide a list of, I think I got a chance to look at it. Does it give a list of those changes that are needed?
No, I didn't detail all those lists. You know, I think that there's, the one thing we talked about early on is they have this huge room down in the basement that can't be used because there is no other exit. There's just the stairs down. And that's a simple thing. So they could open up for more events to be held there to bring people in. The layout of the library is frozen in the seventies. You walk in, you sit in unbearable chairs at a brown, brown table with the brown paneling all around you. And the smell of the seventies is still there, too.
Hasn't changed much.
Hasn't changed much at all. So...
Disco ball on the ceiling.
Yeah, just missing that. But definitely, you know, that piece is there. But you're seeing that the places that are getting with the times, there are comfy visiting areas. You sit socialize, you know, where people are really more socializing. If we want to bring our young families back into the libraries, you know, there really needs to be a comfortable place for the moms to sit and visit while the kids are looking at the books and playing with the different things they have there. There are so many different wonderful things there. They were quite fun. My granddaughter made this beautiful thing out of wooden sticks. And it showed them how to lay out and made this beautiful butterfly that Janet took a picture of and posted on Facebook and tweeted to everyone, you know? So it's great. So, and she was so excited. I mean, you could hear throughout our whole meeting, the excitement of this and that and running from book to book and talking about this and that. And she signed out books and, you know, kids are so tied to their electronic devices. They don't know about libraries unless we show them. And how exciting it is when kids begin to read. And it's a foundation that is gonna stay with them forever. And we just need to make it relevant and make parents want to go to the library and what is there for them? You know, simple cappuccino machine or a Keurig or whatever. You know, while you sit and have a cup of coffee and visit and socialize. It's about socializing. It's just how it is. So simple, simple things. It's not anything major to make this place relevant. Her, Allison has a very big office that really could be contained behind the desk. And the desk is, you know, a twenty-foot-long desk. I don't think that we have enough patrons coming up to that desk to fill it, where that could be cut down, easily make it handicap accessible to go into their back room and keep it a classroom. Because they do hold GED classes there, which have been very... there, which have been very successful. Because before, it was just handing out the assignments and then handing it in, but they're, they're actually making classroom time for kids or adults, whomever's getting their GED, to ask the questions and to work with a teacher. And it's been so successful that now they're adding two more nights during the week. All right? And that is happening after hours, because the library is currently only open 11:30 to 5:30, three nights a week, and Saturday from 11 to 2.
10 to 2.
10 to 2?
No, 10 to 1.
Some, 3 hours, whatever it is.
10 to 1.
Is 10 to 1.
Yep.
So, the hours really aren't relevant to today's age. I'm not sure who they're going to capture in those hours. So, and she did break it down by Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. There was no glaring, well, get rid of that day, you know, type thing. But in Saturday, in the little 3 hours, that's their best showing, and so, do we need to be open more on Saturday? You know, your chores aren't even really done until noon with kids, if you're lucky.
Right.
Before you can head out the door.
Yeah.
So, you know, that would be something that would be looked at, is, you know, possibly expanding the hours. They are required by law to be open 20 hours, they currently are open 21 hours a week. So, that's part of when you're receiving monies for the library, you have to have certain hours to be open. You capture more by having more hours, plain and simple. But, right, if we were to do that, you know, then that would be a different expense, as you'd have to have more staff in there, or change it because she's salaried for the 20 hours currently.
I think if we change the hours.
Right.
Keep the same number of hours per week.
Yes, just adjust.
Yeah, you go past 5:30.
Yeah.
People won't get home from work until 5:30.
No, no. So, it does not, the current hours do not cater to the working people at all, period. I mean, a 10 to 1 doesn't even hit it, because you say, you know, Saturday morning, as you get your chores and everything done for you, you head out to do things. And unfortunately, today's day and age, Sunday's a relevant day. You know, I'm not one to propose having things on Sundays, but it is a day for doing things like that. I don't know. So, a lot can be explored, is a lot of research to do, there's tons of reading on the subject. They currently have just two computers in the library, and that usage is way down too. Again, every kid has got an iPhone, you know, with a computer in their back pocket, so there's really not, so what can we do? Was it all Sable Valley that's getting the 3D printer? Remember how I said that, everyone kind of just laughed at me as they need 3D printer? You know, that's really, those kind of exciting things that others don't have, there's tons of grants for those right now, because that's really the wave of the future, and how exciting for kids to be excited with something like that, you know, to get a grant to get that in there. So, there's things that can, that can be done. Is it guaranteed to be successful? We don't know. She's had trouble with the, the different children's programs, getting a consistent time for the reading group. They've always been more successful when you've had a parent that was vested in it, and of course, you're seeing the children today again with the electronic devices and not the books, you know, and getting hooked into the books. So, then what do we do? Is you've got to look at programs using some of these iPads and, you know, the things the kids are playing with, and how are we going to get them hooked in to get them to want to pick up a physical book and be excited about turning the page and the pictures instead of, you know, swiping a pad.
So, are you going to put together information that said, anything that the library needs in terms of reconstruction or renovation, like for the room downstairs to have another exit? So, you're going to, are you putting, is that what you're going to?
Yeah, I can put all that in, we can put recommendations of what we think it needs.
Well, I'm just, yeah, because if you're going to give us all of that to have for the, we're going to need that while in advance of the May meeting.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, and that's, it's more of an opinion, I would say, at this point.
It's a wish list.
It's a wish list. I mean, factually, is there anything that needs to be done to the library? No. It's a sufficient building. They do need to, if we're going to use that space in the bottom and make it relevant and have more events that could draw people in, into the library, then we definitely need to have the second exit out of there.
So, that's the kind of information?
Right.
And that will also include salaries and things of that nature? Should we can look at all that?
Yeah. So, and you currently have, you have all of the budget information for the library. Now, you have what program she has used, what has worked, what hasn't worked, what is working, which, there's nothing that's working for children at the moment. The only thing that was working was the GED class that they have right now. So, it is a matter of getting more, as I said, more information for the youth, because if we don't build it from the bottom, it's not going to sustain. But even the things that I said for our seniors in our village, which is a huge piece of our population, and getting a mobile station wagon going around and, you know, here's a printout of recommended books right now, and dropping it off, and then they can sign up for what books they want, and we deliver them. I mean, we need to change what we're doing and get out from behind a desk, or get, you know, whatever it is to make the place relevant. You know, there, I think there would be a lot more if we cater to a door-to-door situation for our seniors is a big piece, I think, and I think it'd be an exciting piece.
I do think, however, that most of the usage are the seniors. I mean, that's why she's left the hours at 5:30, because these people are home during the day.
Right.
Most of her.
Patrons, correct.
Her patrons are the seniors.
But I'm talking about seniors that.
Who are housebound.
Are housebound.
Right. No, I think it's a great idea, but I think right now, that is the main population.
Right.
We're not hitting the others.
Correct.
Look at how popular that computer, intro to computers is at the mall for the seniors. I mean, they have people standing in line to sign up for them.
I know. I was thinking the exact same thing, why not get a satellite up here?
Do they do outreach?
I will check with her. This was a grant that they got for this, for down there, and it is exciting, I wish that they would lower the age group, because I'd like to take a look at this, how to use my iPad. Twit and twop and all that other stuff.
I told you I was having.
Computers are relatively inexpensive now, so.
Right.
I mean, you were selling them at all these for $99.
So, and it's exciting, you know, and they're hitting that generation that didn't use the, you know, electronic devices, you know. And it's one of the things I'm pushing in all our nursing homes, assisted living, is, did you know that you can talk to your grandkids, you know? And really trying to get a computer or a mobile iPad within every single facility to go around for people who don't have contact with anyone, to be able to have that FaceTime. And they're, they're so excited when they see those things. And they didn't know, and so, it's a real big push, because it is part of the socialization, and it's important for everyone's health and well-being. So, as we focus on the seniors, there's that same piece we need to focus in on the kids, and how do we get them hooked in to a generation of total electronics versus, you know, the old books?
It's Wi-Fi in the library?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's Wi-Fi or if it's just hardwired.
They have, well, they have high speed, it's, you just put a modem in there, so.
Yeah, I don't know though, but.
Yeah.
I have not actually asked her that.
I just assumed, so I double check.
Well, like here, I can't get the Wi-Fi here anymore.
Because we had a request from the border patrol, they wanted to hook into our Wi-Fi at the fire station.
We were talking about that.
Told them no, obviously, but.
Have cable there?
Ask them to.
Yes.
Could be a cheap purchase, I mean, just get a modem.
Well, we have it, but.
It's secure.
They wanted it for other reasons than security.
Oh.
We can get a modem for the library. In fact, I have one or two at home.
Right.
Give it to you.
Yeah, I think I have a couple too.
I think I do too.
The boosters didn't work in the house. Anyway, so, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of exciting potential.
That's the key term, potential.
Yes.
There's, there's potential, but there's a price tag. So, we just have to weigh the pros and cons.
And there's grants out there too, though. There's quite a bit of grants for community. And Stewart's is a huge supporter, I mean, we've missed for this year, but again, if this is something that we're pursuing, I would apply for that holiday, Mac, what is it called, Holly, and they've been very generous with us over the years. But there are a few, same with the Robert Wood Foundation for the Community Events, and because the library currently does not have a 501(c)(3) status because it costs too much to apply for, it is very costly and there's a lot involved in doing it, that would be a perk to come on with us, because we have that standing. So, again, we can apply for more grants and options out there. And because libraries are changing, they are having to put money into them to make them relevant, so there is funding out there, so. And I can give a list of possible grants that are available in dollar amounts as well. That's exciting.
It is exciting, there is potential.
And we want to try and do it where it's not taking from the meeting house as well. I mean, that's a piece, is what kind of things would work best at the library and not taking from, you know, everything that's going there, because that is such a huge success. But we see where this socialization is important, and people are loving that, and so, what are some other avenues that we can do?
It can be two different paths.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree.
But you need someone who is going to organize them.
So, it would definitely be a change in the role.
Yes.
Good, we'll look forward to May's meeting. Anything more?
No, that's it.
All right, I got a list of things under new business. Need a motion to change the April board meeting from the 11th to the 4th?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? That's our organizational meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to have a public hearing on April 4th at 7:00 PM. To discuss the budget.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The organizational meeting is, yes, April 4th. Need a motion to tentatively approve the 2016-2017 budget.
So, moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Nice, nice job.
Nice job, yeah.
And thank you. Thank you.
Over there. Okay? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fencing was mentioned about a property downtown. I have probably, I have a quote from probably the only place around that will rent us fencing. Mike McDonald measured for me. We need quite a bit of paneling, the fence panels, six by 12s. We need about 28 of those, we need some fence stands, and we need some clamps and stuff like that to put them up. The quote that we have is from Taylor Rental, and the sum is $1,295. This is for a year.
Yeah.
This is for a year's rental. Obviously, if we take it down and send it back earlier, it'll be cheaper for us, I believe, but maybe not.
It gets a price no matter what.
Yeah. So, I need board approval to move forward with that. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this $1,295?
I don't, that's, I think it's a reasonable price.
Yes, sooner than later.
Except that we've got to put it up, we've got to put it up.
Can you get to that sooner than later?
I think so.
It will be an issue, I guess, going to see right now, when it was measured, I was measured out the curb, but I got to finish with the state, make sure we don't have to have a setback. That's the only thing, may have to have a setback so far, because if somebody's walking by, and going, something happens, so, we'll know for sure.
But we've got a car width block area.
Right.
So, I would think that it would not need to be, but yeah.
I just got to verify.
No, no, I agree.
Because, you know.
I really hope we can have a little pathway.
Yeah. Just right of the, right away.
On the curb side, you mean.
Yeah, too many people coming around, and then, like, kids coming around and then heading to the block.
Depending how far out, when you come down the street, they don't stop.
Right.
And that fence is going to be like this with them, so they're not going to see, and they're going to, you know what I mean? Obviously, to the right, it's not as bad as people turning left, because if there's cars coming, you know, depending how far out, if it's against the curb, then it's going to be a little bit a blind spot, if you will, around the corner, you know? But I want to see with the state what they're, what they tell us.
Does chain look great?
Yeah. Same thing, it's the same fence, they head around saying areas.
Yeah, so you can see through it, okay.
It's just when you have it setting a long way and you're looking down and you can't see.
Oh, no, I get it, I get what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
There's a long line of sight there from the corner, you've got that first empty lot, then the building.
But it's short when they don't stop.
Well, yeah, well, they don't stop. I don't care what you have.
I was watching this morning as I was in line, and not one person stopped.
So, ideally, you'd like the fence to stop.
All the way to the curb, all the way to the edge of the curb.
The edge of the curb.
Well, you've got to have enough, whatever they let us, if they let us come out to the curb, that'd be great, because really, it's probably not even enough, if that, whatever curve is forward.
It isn't, in the front.
You know? But I have to see what the state says, being their road, how far back, we may have to move it back a little bit, you know, be able to put it in the curb. What it was measured out to, it was measured out to the curb around the square, but it just depends on.
So, it'll be less, if anything.
Possibly, all we do is set it back a little bit, because the panels are 12-foot, we're not going to take 12 feet up, so.
Are you concerned, Dan, about people having to go on the.
Yeah, because they end up on the street, and I've seen so many kids walking in the street. The kids are, the kids aren't wa, aren't watching the cars, they don't see them coming across the bridge.
There is a side lane where people can park, if you will, not really enough to park on it.
I know, but.
There is, past the white line, which is supposed to be for bicycles and supposed to be for pedestrians and, but I don't know how that'll play out with.
Because I really hate to have them have to cross the street twice. You know, cross at the crosswalk, walk down, and then cross again to get to the playground.
Now, the only other option we would have, is a temporary option, would be to put a row of cones and leave a space between the curbing and the row of cones, but, you know, as long as I do what's going to happen.
While they're getting off.
Everybody's running over the trucks.
Yeah, those trucks go by there so fast.
But you get a Jersey barrier.
Yeah, that would do it.
No, it would.
No, really?
Between the curb, four, five feet.
If they say allow that, that would, that would work.
Yeah.
I don't think you could let that truck in the road.
You don't make sense.
It wouldn't be feasible to do a covered walkway like they do around, you know, the cities when they're working on buildings, use scaffolding as protection for you to walk under.
The thing is, if it goes from the bottom, if it rolls out, you're the same.
Yeah, but then you could move the fence in, is what I'm saying, closer, and just any outside fence, have that covered protection. Something I've ever seen is, you know, Ben sitting on the floor, I'm sure you've seen
Something I've ever seen is, you know, been in cities before, I'm sure I've seen them, you know, they use scaffolding and cover it. And allow pedestrians to walk underneath, still on the sidewalk.
Right, right. I know what you mean. It's too bad that unfortunately this building is on a corner. It's too bad that it's not in an area where we wouldn't have to worry about pedestrians at all because if that building decides to go, that fence isn't keeping it in.
No, no, it's probably not even, it's more to keep the kids away, out of there. Yeah.
I mean, the danger is the front of the building, the corner where all the bricks are coming apart.
Exactly.
I mean, if you keep moving the fence back in, the, the whole purpose of the fence is to keep people away from it.
Right.
So, I mean, on the side of the back, there's really not much of a hazard there. There's some, but not as bad as the front.
Yeah, I know. And I would emphasize that with the state, you know, that it is the front of the building that is the problem.
Maybe, maybe they would allow using the parking space as a walkway. Put another section of fence to create a corridor and have it taped off with safety tape so it's not, so it's visible. I don't know. I, I do agree you need to the curb because you move in.
The best option would be if somebody could actually meet you there.
Yeah.
I don't think the state's gonna allow us to put anything happening along that roadway.
You can work your magic.
Off the curb.
Off the curb.
Yeah.
Mike will get a clearer, Mike will get a clearer.
Yes, he will.
Yeah, they might have suggested maybe.
Okay, uh, if there's no, uh, time, you mentioned the cameras. According to Bernier-Carr, the camera system is listed under an alternate at this moment, at this, at this time. I don't know. A lot of that's gonna depend on the budget. I would recommend that we get another quote from the, from NCC and go ahead and install the camera system ourselves. And then look for reimbursement from the water project. You're talking. You're probably talking May of 2017.
Right, before we could tell it or not.
And we have the funding. We have money put away in a reserve account. It's gonna be approximately about $30,000 with the base station and the, and the mast and all the stuff that's necessary for this. But at least we will be able to get some sort of security system in the playground on Elm Street and at the wastewater plant. So, I think that is probably the way to go here, rather than waiting for, you know, another year and a half to see how much money is left in this project to do these alternates.
Right, and if there was money left, it would be able to be reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, but I have a feeling that all of those, all of that money's gonna get spent with the other alternates that we have listed.
Yeah. Which are, which are very important, so.
Yeah, but I would recommend that we, that we get some numbers and then, uh, maybe not in April, but in, in the May meeting, uh, come up with the funding ourselves and, and move forward with this. It's just, we all agree, I think, that there's a security situation at the playground. You know, with some vandalism and things like that, Elm Street, the dumping, you know, where we could obviously use that. And that would be another use for the, I guess, a library use is we'd have to put the camera probably on the library under the eaves. And the wastewater plant needs some protection down there.
What about the softening? Okay, wanna.
Pardon?
What about the softening around the median next week? We need one of them there.
Yeah.
Maybe on this part, the next part of the softening part of the project.
Yeah.
Instead of being an alternate, I didn't see it listed as an alternate in the first part.
No, it's under the project.
Okay. Think we should look into that.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, actually, we have noon, two noon, me and you.
In the morning and the afternoon?
9:30 and then 10:30.
Where's the 10:30? Tom?
Water plant.
Okay.
The building. Was it engineers? Yeah. Not anybody's state.
Okay, um, next under new business. Thinking about this over the weekend and I discussed this with Janet this afternoon. We raised the residential water rates to 454. And it will be part of this billing. I would like to recommend that we also raise the commercial water inside rate to match that of the residential rate that we voted on previously. This will increase the commercial water rate inside the village by six cents a thousand. If you want to raise it the same percentage, it'll go from 440, the same percentage that we raised the residential rate, it'll go from 448 to $6. But I think we can, with the commercial rate, I think we can help take up some of the class that we were going to be faced with. The shortfall for our first debt repayment of $57,000. I think we would have to hit the fund balance for six or 7,000. I think we can, if we raise it to 454, six cents a thousand to match that of the residential rate, it'll help pick up some of that slack.
How many businesses is that affect in the village?
It was about eight.
About eight. I have a list here somewhere. I have a list there.
Are these huge water users, is it gonna be a huge change to their bottom line?
Well, GSA was one of them, but they, when they, when we re, when we decreased the water rates, that went.
Uh, GSA is.
That was significant difference for them going down, so.
They're.
That's outside.
Yeah, that's outside.
It's outside user, just inside user.
So, it'd be the plaza.
Be the shopping plaza.
The shopping plaza.
Plaza of the bank, a couple banks down there. I mean, it's not, they're not huge users. And.
Capex.
Ice, capex.
Yeah.
Ice.
Insurance, Northern Housing.
I don't think that six cents a thousand is, is an overly large burden for these.
Stephanie Brown up there.
Well, no, I didn't know if any of them were, I'm trying, I was trying to think of who was in town that, where there was a significant increase. In fact, their bottom line, as they're facing, you know, minimum wage increases, all these other things that are gonna push people out of business. We don't want to do that either.
Right.
No, but on the other hand.
No, and they should pick up the portion. I agree.
Well, we were just thinking that we're asking the residents to make a much bigger jump. That maybe it would be fair to ask them to just make a six cent jump. To show that in good faith, they are contributing this to.
No, I agree.
So, I need a motion to approve this.
I make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
I think we can do this with, without, we need a roll call for this. All those in favor of this six cent increase in the commercial water inside rate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so that we can, can we do this on this billing, right? Okay. I've been calling around different temp agencies for the staffing, the temporary employee for the summer, if we decide to go that route. This is what I'm finding. I've called the different temp agencies, three here, and I could call a couple more, but the markup. The markup on these temporary agencies for help. And that was one of the reasons that we wanted to look at this because it just, we don't have the liability. We don't have the paperwork. We don't have the taxes. We don't have any of this stuff. But, uh, one office, the markup is 48%. The second one that I talked to, 52% markup. And the third one that I talked to, and I can call others tomorrow as well, but the third one that I talked to was a 61% markup. And this was at, I, I think the board needs to look at at what range or hourly rate do we want to bring this person onboard? I mean, we're, I'm asking for somebody with a little bit of technical skill who can help Mike and the rest of the guys with the water meter installations. Again, most of this will be reimbursable. We'll just keep track of the hours. They work on the water project. We'll build a water project. They're mowing grass. That will be on the village's dime, so to speak.
What's the lowest hourly rate of one of our guys?
The lowest hourly rate? Somewhere's in the 17 something. 17 something, and I, the suggestion that was given to me by these temp agencies, and it's, it's not so much because they, they have the people who are willing to start as soon as we called them. They have folks with some technical skills. And I was upfront with them. I said, we're gonna look at this, you know, for, for a, a three or four month with extensions possible up to a year. All of them assured me that they have people that are there that will look for, you know, a semi-permanent position here and will stay with us for that length of time. Uh, I think the recommendation was, uh, 12 to 13 dollars an hour to start.
Yeah.
And that would put us in the, at 13 dollars, it works out to 1923 an hour that we would be paying. That is for one of them. Uh, the second one would be 1976. At the 61 percentile, one I didn't figure, but I'm sure it would be in a $20 range plus.
If we do the 13.
If we do the 13. And this person would, there are some restrictions. One, uh, one company that I called restricts the temp going into people's houses. I said, well, they're gonna have to be a gopher back and forth from the cellar to help whoever's changing over the water meter, to go get parts, to help run the wire, to help, you know, do the general labor stuff that our personnel would be doing, would be doing the, the professional stuff, the actual changing of the meter and the piping and stuff.
Which rate refuses access to the house? Is it just one place or?
Uh, it was just one place. It was the 48% on one. But I think we can overcome that. Talking to this person, we have used this organization in the past. They know that we've used them in the past and, uh, she assured me that they could probably do better than that.
Okay.
If I get back to her and say, this is what I. But.
Is that, is that gonna work with restriction like that, using this guy?
I think so.
For me, against the meters?
It should be. I mean, uh, see what other, I don't know what, I know usually, I don't know what they said. I know usually they don't want me using any tools. They don't want me driving. They don't want me, um, so I don't know. We'll have to see what restrictions are, if it's the same as usual or how.
But you're gonna ask for skilled, partly skilled person versus, versus somebody that's just gonna come and mow your lawn.
I think we'll be okay.
You know?
I mean, it's not like we're gonna put them up in the tower or we're not gonna put them in a dangerous situation anyway.
Right.
You know, we did allow them to mow grass last year with, you know, use a tractor to mow and stuff like that, so.
But we have to have.
They've been very good with us.
We, we have to have, for these installs, we have to have two people. One is a safety unit. You don't know what you're getting into.
That's what I say.
If you're somebody's home.
He's not gonna stay outside.
You've got electrical wires prepared, you have water, and you get hooked on electricity and you can't get out.
Yeah.
You gotta have somebody with you. You can't, you don't know, you, you never know what's underneath there.
That's what I'm saying. So, I think he's gonna be clear. He's gonna have to deal with one without it.
I agree. So, if I have the board's permission, I will call and we will start the interviewing process so, so we can get this person onboard, get him trained a little bit. We're gonna have the spring chores coming up soon, so. Can I call the agencies and have them?
What do we want to do, 12 or 13?
I would say 13.
I'd say 13.
Yeah. We'll look for some skill side.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, if that's a consensus, then I'll start the search tomorrow, Mike and I, maybe Janet, somebody who's here. We'll do some interviews and we'll get the person started. Okay, very good. Thank you. Camera, over caring organizational, change the dates. Tentative approval, Patterson, adjusting commercial area staffing. I'd like to request a short executive session to discuss negotiations. To what, the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Somewhat. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to come back into the regular session?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the union contract?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I don't think we can anyway. I think it's negotiated, so it's gotta be.
Right.
Okay. Uh, I have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Geer.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. That being said, is there any new business to come before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we got one more thing, yes, thank you.
The water.
I don't know that we can act on this tonight.
Oh, yeah, I know. I make a motion to accept the credit. Uh, in the amount of, what is it, $96?
$96. Yes. I have a subject, Trombley.
It's very straightforward.
Didn't go in the sewer.
No, when Robert went around the meter and he noticed it was high, he called me right away. He said, something's not right, so we went down, pulled the meter.
Big change.
The meter was spinning. I went in, I said, I don't think it's sharp, nothing making any sound. So, I opened her house door underneath and it was where the drain tube, the pop-off comes down, there's a tube running. Luckily, there's a pan underneath. Her tank had split at the bottom. So, it was running right out. Luckily, that drain pan was there because it ruined all floors. It was running down where the, where the pop-off tube comes out. So, that's how she, didn't notice her daughter wasn't hot for the last week, so it didn't seem to be right. I said, wait till you get your electric bill.
I, I, I said the motion.
Okay, uh, do you want this to be given as a credit on the next billing or a credit of $96 on this billing?
This billing.
This billing? Can we do that, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, this billing. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The credit will be given. That's all I got.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.